All this day from me, the Board of Commissioners and Order. We're starting to pledge allegiance to the plan.
My pledge of allegiance to the plan is to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're here to reconsider the property of the insurance. That's the only item on the agenda. I think we have two insurance companies here. Mr. Wilson, do you want to speak?
Yes, please. Here is a packet with binders and information. Much as you've already seen, this information was included in all of your first packets, which includes some details. I did not make any more copies of that.
Will you clarify that statement? You said we've already seen that. You're referring to some of this material of what we saw at our previous meeting, correct?
That's correct.
Alright, thank you.
That's correct. Good morning.
Morning.
Two things that I've been asked as a result of some of the newspaper information out there that I want to clarify right up front. First and foremost, you are insured, coverage is in place and effective for Fayette County. Second, the timeline with this was less than desirable. I know this. I want to work with you to rectify this situation as we go forward. And along the way, we were confronted with numerous obstacles. Truth, honesty, and integrity are being called into question. And if you feel that I'm not being truthful and honest with you, please tell me now. There have been some things thrown out that are not true. I want to tell you that nothing in our proposal has changed since I presented it to you, not coverage, not price. I followed the instructions that I was given, meaning that I was told to present my proposal to Mrs. Kidd and Mr. Appel, which I did. Mr. Barker told me that he had asked them to review and make a recommendation. At that meeting, I asked about some deductibles, limits, and some very important dates. At that initial meeting, they were not sure of some of these. I also told them at that initial meeting that I was working to refine options, deductibles, and pricing. And my pricing would be no higher than what I gave to Mrs. Kidd, Mr. Appel, and Mr. Barker saw in that meeting. However, I hoped and I intended that that would be better than what I had at that moment. At that point in time, I had not seen any other information other than what I had to present. I did advise them that they needed to know this before the meeting. As a result, I met with Mr. Appel later in that day and advised him of questions that should be asked. Trying to accomplish this and understand it in one setting would be a daunting, if not impossible, task. This is where apparently some of the allegations appear to have come from. Fact is, insurance is not subject to mandatory bidding requirements that other projects you're involved with are. You have the sole discretion to provide information and make this decision independently. Why is that? Well, one of the major reasons is none of these programs that provide the specialized coverages for municipalities will be identical. They will not be apples to apples. They all have differences. The truth, the competitor had every piece of our information, of ours, coverage, price, every piece, back in December. I had no knowledge of this until May. I will tell you, there has been no wrongdoing, period, in this process. There has not been. If I'd have known all this in December, I believe we would have taken another approach and not had the dilemma that we have today. I've talked about limitations in liability and immunities by statute governmental entities have. It's on that basis and some program differences that I brought our proposal to you. My mission from a pricing perspective, from the beginning, without any other knowledge or insight, was to try to get to your budget now. However, it was soon evident that was not going to happen. However, I did bring the reduction in premium of over 15% from the prior year. Also, as you will see in your packet, we did bind coverage. I had a conversation with Mr. Appel. I had a conversation with Mr. Barton, Barker, about what does that mean, what could be done. It is not an extension of coverage. These are binders going forward. Should you decide to go the other direction, there will be premium penalties imposed. My rough calculation at this point in time is that the premium that will be due is $31,480 something dollars. And again, this was my calculations that I made.
Say that again, Brent, please. How close the dollar figure, I'm sorry.
$31,485 is the number that I estimate, but that's my estimation. I have said to Mr. Appel and Mr. Barker that, you know, could there be a possible alternative to some of this? Maybe, but I did not know this. I would check on this. I did check on that. And both of our carriers said, no, we have bound the coverage. We have issued binders for you. And our penalties will be imposed. I'm very guarded about releasing claims information and information relative to limits in a public meeting for many, many reasons. One such that has come to light, and it's out here in the public knowledge today, is our highway garage. And we know that the building has been deemed to have been unsafe. What does that mean to you and our insurance carrier? Well, it means that in the event of a claim, our defense is virtually gone. This has been in the newspaper. I've advised people of that from the best of my knowledge since the time the question was posed to me. Folks, if we want to get our county and city back together on solid ground, we have to work together. We have to pull on the same end of the rope. We can solve this. We can resolve this. But we've got to sit down at the table together and work through these things. While there are always been issues that is confronting us, yes, there have. And I will stand here with you to resolve any issues that come up relative to me. And with that, I will be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Brent, I've got a question about the garage down there we're talking about. Is it covered under insurance, or we're just not going to insure it?
As of, from our perspective, I cannot speak for them. But for us, the answer is absolutely covered, yes.
But going back to the question where you said, you know, if it's been condemned, it'd be hard to...
It would be very difficult to defend a liability claim.
Okay.
It could also call property-related questions into play, should there be a property loss down there.
Matter we've brought up numerous times with the financing body, which 14 months after being presented with the problem, they've still done nothing. But the Commissioners are trying.
To speak to your earlier comment, the penalty today, if we were to switch, is That would be EMC's penalty?
That is correct, and the law enforcement penalty.
As far as what the papers had and what anybody said, I'm not going to comment to that. I told the paper I wasn't going to comment to that. I just know that, you know, the issue would come up earlier in the past, and you had made a mention earlier about the fact that, you know, your information was out there in December, and they get to see your quotes. Any quote that's in the courthouse is public knowledge. But it's my understanding was any quote that is being redone cannot be shared. And that was how that was perceived, or perceived as far as the thought process. But all I really want to do is hear the insurance, and I think it's probably about the same exact thing the last time. But with a $31,000 penalty, that's a big chunk to swallow, to walk away now. You know, so, you know, I just want to hear what everybody's got to say, and then we'll make a decision, and we'll move on. Because I'm not going to throw anybody under the bus. I'm going to keep everybody's integrity above table, and we're just going to keep it that way.
Brent, I have a question. Ms. Zulu, excuse me. Ms. Zulu from New York, niece Lucas called me this morning and said that, and I asked her to bring this forward in the meeting, okay? She said that your policy, that on the law enforcement part, that if an officer, sheriff's deputy was sued, okay, that he or she may not be covered. Is that the situation? Is that the...
The truth of that matter is, Frank, without having the exact set of circumstances in front of us, either one of us, I'm going to say, no, the law enforcement people would be covered. Yes, is my answer. But I have to qualify that in the insurance world as, you've got to have exact details of what actually happened to say yes without a doubt it is, or no without a doubt it isn't. Again, very complicated state of affairs with this. If any shortcoming that we had in where we are were the limits of liability with the law enforcement, I have said that. I have admitted that. I have a comfort zone with what the sheriff is doing, what he's committed to doing, and what his staff's committed to doing to once again turn this entire situation around. And I truly believe we can get there.
Okay. The, and I'm sure it's a commonsensical answer, okay? But in the event that a deputy is sued, a law enforcement officer is sued, this insurance company's coverage extends to state and federal courts?
Yes, it does. And also, one important thing to note, the cost of defense is outside of our limit of liability. So the cost of defense, at the end of the day, does not apply to the limit of liability that is available to make payment on a claim. It is outside of that.
Meaning you have more flexibility?
Well, meaning that if a lot of money is spent on defense, that is not held against you and held against your limits of liability. Conversation you and I've had from your law enforcement background, that will the insurance company sometime settle things when I think they shouldn't? And I've said, Frank, yes, I know how you think about that.
We've been on the same side on that, yes.
But the only thing that counts against your limits of liability is the settlement, not the cost of defense.
Okay. Interesting. What is the limit on the law enforcement?
It is $1 million.
The other thing I had to say too was, and you said we're going to work problems, and we're going to fix them, and I guess two or three years ago, and the insurance company, you as a broker can't proceed this. I mean, if it happens, it happens. But we go from $115 to $251. That's a big jump in price. The next year, we get canceled. This year, we get canceled. It's kind of like, I'm not an insurance person. I'm not an insurance expert. I just know the insurance company tells me I'm insured, and, you know, the old saying, knock on wood, hope I am. But I guess, I guess the way this, we got to make sure the taxpayers get what's best for the county today, no matter what, for the best bottom dollar. Because if we get sued for any reason whatsoever, and we're not covered, vice versa, here, there, whatever, and we end up spending more money than we have just to take the claims and fix everything, it could potentially put us in a bad, bad spot. So, you know.
And I am not disputing that in any form, shape, or otherwise. And when we are dealing with insurance carriers of this nature and complexity, there are so many issues that enter the picture, inclusive of deductibles across the board that you've participated with, and we've had numerous conversations with regard to that. From a premium savings perspective, and I did not include that in my initial comments because I said it this last time, in 2006, your coverage had been with the carrier that is being represented on the other side from us, and their premium was between $179,180 in 2006. I asked them to review their levels of pricing. They declined to do so. I told them that I had to, in the best interest of Fayette County, go out to the market, which up until this last two years, I have done for Fayette County and been, I'll say, as transparent as I could possibly be with everything. I tried to be your insurance shopper on a three- to five-year period of time, absent problems and issues. From 2006 through last year, when, yes, the premium did double. Yes, it did. You'd been in a low of $88,000 and a high of $120,000, which, again, you know, the rough numbers, it's in excess of $500,000 that I have saved you over that period of time.
By my figures versus our current premiums, well, slide first, $251,000. If we take your two lowest bids, round them up to $209,000, that's a $26,000 savings over what we were paying. Obviously, if option one is $226,000, so you'd have to, you're basically talking about one of the $25,000 savings there. Or, excuse me, pay, yeah, that's $25,000 savings there.
And I recommended to you option three, which is shown first on that list today from the pricing. That's what I recommended. That's what, at that time, you accepted.
Option three is what, as of we speak, this is what we have right now.
That is what you have right now. That is correct.
Chris, do you have any questions?
The law enforcement's $1 million limit for, what is it per occurrence? For the law enforcement portion?
Yes.
What is it per occurrence?
$1 million.
And then $1 million aggregate?
That's correct.
So, if I'm understanding you correctly, okay, in the event there's a claim filed against the county, and they pay out $1 million, okay? There's no more money after that, which is an extremely unlikely situation. I do understand that. But just so I'm understanding, is that correct?
And the answer to that is yes. And again, as I've analyzed, looked at all of your historic claims, go back to the fact that I said, that amount does not include defense dollars. That's outside of that, totally separate of that. That has not happened, has not come close to happening. I don't want to, again, say, you know, there are some limitations and immunities that you enjoy, that also assist with that. And once again, with the commitment of the law enforcement people, the goal is to certainly work all of those things, coverage, price, everything together, to the most favorable levels that you have enjoyed in some past years.
Again, so for clarification purposes, when you look at the law enforcement section, you look at our prior claims, which I assume you go worst-case scenario, and then you build your coverage and everything according to that. So if you had a worst-case scenario to consider, and you've given us a $1 million total coverage, you're thinking that's sufficient for unexpected problems? Is that fair? And I won't put words in my mouth, but is that fair?
That's my best answer for you, as I stand here today.
Alright. Thank you.
I'm going to be the handout boy.
Thank you all for giving us the opportunity to talk today and provide to you guys with the little explanation about our quotes. Our bid too has not changed since it was presented originally almost four weeks ago. We presented our very best quote and very best price right up front, and I'm convinced it is better coverage than what is being offered on the table. First of all, it was our understanding that you guys would be getting an extension from Apex for one week, so you wouldn't have that penalty. And according to the email from the auditor that we have, she said that she had received a binder from Apex showing that one-week extension. So the fact that now there's a $30,000...
I didn't say that. I just said I had received binders. I didn't say that it was an extension, I don't think.
Okay. Well, regardless, we understand...
This $30-some thousand is earned premium. If you go with us, it goes back to July 1st, and they had no earned premium because they hadn't earned it.
Yeah, well, we can show...
Well, ours will be dated July 1, and it will extend to June 30 of 2015. And that's the way it should be. The reason, I think, for the misunderstanding and not understanding coverages was, that's what happens when you have a lot of things to consider. The one thing we did not do is we did not change any of our quote from the original. That's the reason we've been able to get Bightumulus to say, if you decide to go with us today, it's coverage back to July 1, therefore there will be no earned premium from the other carrier.
You can show you had other coverage in place. And insurance is a complex matter. I, you know, I know months ago, when I came before you guys first introduced myself, I explained this, but I'd just like to reiterate, I'm an attorney. I was first an attorney for an insurance company, so I see how they handle policy development, how they handle claims. I'm also been an underwriter for various national insurance companies, so I know how they do the underwriting and pricing, how they develop coverage, how they make claims. And now I've been an agent for about eight years on this side, serving individuals on the retail side. So I know this from all angles. And while it seems complex from the outside, trust me, if you know what you're doing, it's not that hard. And what you have in your packets is a full comparison of our quote and the competitor's quote, line by line, so you can see...
That's good.
Yes, there's two sets.
Did you guys see it? Which one?
Yes. And when you really look at the coverage and pricing, and I understand the hesitancy to give limits in a public meeting, but on the other hand, it is all, all these documents are public knowledge anyway, so it doesn't really gain you anything to not say it in this meeting. And the only way for you guys to make an educated decision about what you're buying is to really look at these limits. You have to know what you're buying. As we just taught, I mean, just to start off from the beginning on the law enforcement legal, I know that we don't want to talk about any specific claims, but you guys have had some claims in this area. This is important coverage, and the competitor has $1 million of coverage available. Your umbrella coverage that goes over your other lines, automobile, general liability, employment practices liability, won't go over that law enforcement legal coverage because it's written through a not-admitted company on not-admitted paper. So they're not going to cover, they're not going to cover that. So you have $1 million per occurrence, $1 million per aggregate. What we have on the table is $5 million per occurrence and $10 million aggregate. That's huge. And I know that you have some protection under sovereign immunity through the state, but your attorney might be able to better explain this. It requires, it goes up to $5 million. So $1 million just isn't enough in the worst-case scenario. And I know you can look back 10, 20 years and say, you never had a claim, but that's what insurance is for. A lot of people say, you look at Henry County, a lot of people told that school, you'll never have all the buildings torn out in a tornado, and they did. You look at the state, and you say like nothing, look at what happened with the state fair, the scaffolding fell. You have insurance for the worst possible case. You know, you don't want to say, well, it didn't happen to us in the past, so let's just roll the dice and say, a million's okay for now because we can't get any better. You guys can get better. This is a better quote on the table.
Talking about buildings.
Yes. On the, on your building coverage too, this quote that you have on the table is for a total of $16 million in building coverage, roughly, so $16 million and change. That includes $10.3 million for your courthouse, which is insured on a functional replacement cost only, which means if you have part of this building destroyed, this is a very historical building, looks good, it's nice for your community, it does not pay to bring it back to its historical, though the way it is now. It will only pay, pay to say... It will only pay, pay to say, you had this many rooms, you build a functional, a functional building, which means a modern building. So you could have two different types of architecture here. If the whole thing burned down, you'd be stuck building it at ten point three million. Could you do that? Maybe, I don't know. What we have, that same building, we've done valuations, which we do for all our clients, to make sure that they're properly insured. And that, this courthouse really to replace will cost more like twenty million, twenty point seven million dollars, and that's the coverage we're providing. And so altogether, your other buildings are also underinsured. And so while this other company or the competitor is offering you sixteen million dollars worth of coverage, we're offering twenty-nine million dollars of building coverage. So you would have the limits to be able to restore the buildings. You wouldn't be stuck with a coinsurance penalty for being underinsured because there is one on the other policy. I can't even stress to you how important of a deal this is in the event of a claim. Now, you may have no claims all year, and this won't matter, but if something goes wrong, it will matter. And people will look at this and say, you could have made the right decision today and got better coverage. So, I mean, you might want to just read through this very carefully. I will say, there is a five thousand dollar deductible on your property with our competitor, and we have a ten, so ours is bigger. But look, but you don't have that many property claims, and if you have a big one, five thousand won't matter. Where the important deductible is on this program is your law enforcement legal. We have come to the table with a, with a twenty-five thousand dollar deductible as opposed to our competitor's fifty thousand. We also have a quote available for ten thousand if you choose to buy that. Why is that important? If you have one claim, that's twenty-five thousand dollars difference that you could be paying. And, and there, there's your whole savings. You said his savings over last year, or was like twenty-six thousand. Well, there's your savings in one claim. If you have multiple claims, that just adds up. So, I mean, that's a, that's a huge difference. Finally, or not finally, but another thing to note is that the way this program is structured is with one million dollar primary limits on your general liability, auto liability, your, all your liabilities, your employment practices, employee benefits. And their umbrella plan goes over that with another, what is it, four million? Another five million dollars. So on most of your coverages, you have six million in coverage, except on the law enforcement where you have only a million. Our program is structured different. And so what that says is if you have a big, a bad car accident and it takes that umbrella, let's, let's say it's worst-case scenario, you hit a bus of kids and you've got a lot of, you use up your umbrella. Then if you have a general liability claim that needs that umbrella, you don't have it. It's gone. The way our program is structured is each individual line has a five million dollar primary limit and a ten million dollar per policy occurrence. So on your law enforcement liability, you guys have one million per occurrence, one million policy limit. We've got five million per occurrence, ten million dollar limit. And each line then exhausts its own limits. So, I mean, we're giving you millions and millions of dollars more coverage for about the same price. And, and, and you might say, well, that you might not need that. You know you might not, but if you do, that's why you buy, that's why you buy insurance.
Because what you're saying is, is if you're not covered and you, you say, well, we may not need it, and then need it, we're, we're gonna be hurt.
You're not gonna sell to us, are you?
Right.
Yeah. And you guys have the opportunity now to do it. And, and again, I, I know they're gonna tell you no, but I, but if you have, if you have other coverage in place, you can cancel a policy. We can show that our coverage can be effective July 1st, and you will not have that premium penalty. And, and I know that, I know this to be true. I've, when I was an underwriter, I had the same issue come up where we would issue policies with minimum earned premium, but if the, if the client had other coverage in place, we'd have to issue a refund anyway, you know? So I, I know that this can be done. So that thirty-one thousand dollar penalty they're trying to save you'll have, that's a threat, really.
Can I ask you a question real quick? Like I said, I don't know anything about insurance. That's why we're back up here again. On the second page of this paper, this one here, one side says medical five thousand, the other side says medical none. What does that mean? Because medical can be expensive.
Yeah. What that means, what that medical is, is if someone falls on your property and slips and falls, it's five thousand dollars that's just kind of out there to be, you know, to give to someone to make the claim go away. Where this doesn't just automatically have the five thousand. You have to make a claim and say, you know, this person's injured and show that you guys were at fault and then get the, the coverage. That's the difference there.
So it would be higher, but it would come from another, it would come from you being at fault?
Yeah.
Versus just. I remember.
So, back to the penalty. Basically what you're, what you're saying, and we'll give, we'll give you a chance to respond, Brad. But basically what you're saying is that even though his company or companies that he's, that are covering us as I speak, okay, that if, if we decide to go with you, I mean, they're, I mean, they have incurred liability and expenditure for coverage for this, these, this week, okay? So basically what your company will do is pay that penalty?
We don't pay the penalty. What we do is we go back to July 1st. We send a letter to that company, EMC, and the, the big problem here is not so much EMC. The one that has the, the big earned premium is that not admitted law enforcement liability policy, which we, you know, on this paper, you'll see there's not, no quote available for comparison. That wasn't in your guys' packet last time. So that is the one that you're having the biggest problem with. And what we'll do is we'll go back and show that we had coverage in place on July 1st. And then if you guys had a claim, let's say on July 2nd, our policy would be on the hook, that company wouldn't, and that's why they would be able to cancel the premium, give your money back. And, and again, I've seen it done, not hundreds of times, but dozens of times, this happens. People buying coverage and then unbind it for reasons exactly like this. It does, it does happen, trust me.
We bought insurance today and there was a claim from something that happened on the 2nd of July, or what, your company would pay that claim?
That's right. But if you have a known claim now, we would need to know about that. I mean, that's the caveat because you can't, you can't provide insurance for something that you know happened, so we need to talk about that. But if you have, if you have had a claim this week.
They'd have to write a letter saying there's no known claim.
Yeah, any claims.
Correct.
Yeah.
But they couldn't have encouraged where we haven't had a claim yet.
That's fine. And then we cover it. That's on our company.
I agree. This multi-class liability, I'm not that studied insurance, I guess. The aggregate says it's ten million. Is that the ten million for all the classes in insurance total?
No, that's for the general liability, it's ten million aggregate for that policy, five million per occurrence. It's a separate bucket of ten million for your employee benefits liability, a separate bucket of ten million for the public officials liability, separate bucket of ten million for wrongful employment practices, separate bucket of ten million for automobiles. So if you add that up, that's like five, fifty, fifty million of coverage there because it's these different silos where you can get coverage from. So it's, I mean, millions of more coverage. I'm not kidding, I'm not kidding.
So say there's a wrongful employment claim, that could be nine million, nine hundred ninety-nine thousand. You could have a law enforcement claim for that much, and without going over any of the aggregates.
Yeah. But, but each claim itself is limited to five million?
So what happens if there's a state fair type situation and one claim's over five million?
Then that doesn't affect, that doesn't affect your auto limit, that you still have your full ten million on the auto. It doesn't affect your general liability, you still have the full ten million there. It only affects that line of coverage.
So you could exhaust that line of coverage, but it wouldn't affect anything else?
Correct. That's exactly right.
They all stand over their coverage versus an umbrella stands over all of those. And the umbrella's gone, everything down was gone. But this is by line of coverage.
So law enforcement stands alone. It's, you don't have other civil liability connected to that?
That's exactly right. So it's much better protection for your sheriff's department.
And it is an admitted carrier. And I'd like for her to talk a little bit about having a non-admitted carrier and having an admitted carrier.
Yeah, admitted carriers are regulated by the state, and that brings you a couple protections. One, if the insurance company happened to go out of business, which don't say that couldn't happen either because we see Kemper was a very respected company, and it kind of went away overnight. I mean, these things happen. So if an insurance company went away and you're in an admitted company, like we're bringing to the table, then you're protected by the state, and the state takes receivership and pays out claims. If, you don't get that protection from a non-admitted company. Also from, so financial stability of that company is very important. And in that case, I, you know, I'm not an accountant, but I like to use A and S ratings. And I, I, you know, that's when you'd want to rely on the financial health of the company. And since we didn't have a quote, we don't know about this law enforcement liability, we don't know who your carrier is, we know it's not admitted. Not sure exactly who it is because that quote was not in the packet. But if they went out of business, you don't, you have the possibility of not even getting your claim paid. Now, the, the other thing that an admitted carrier is, is there are premium taxes that are already included in the premium that's paid to the state, and they do the regulation. And then a, a non-admitted carrier, you guys have to pay the tax. And the state of Indiana, it's two point five percent on the premium that you pay for law enforcement. And just because you guys are a county, you don't escape that tax. School systems, counties, cities, they still have to pay the tax for a non-admitted carrier, which again, is two point seven percent of your total premium for that line of business.
I think Commissioner Jackson asked earlier, is civil rights included with the law enforcement? I thought, I was gonna, or is that just covering such, I mean, is any civil rights suit fall under that?
No, that's a good question. Civil rights, if it's like discrimination of the sheriffs, that falls under law enforcement. But if it's like an employment practices, like you're saying someone was denied a job or wrongfully terminated due to a, a civil rights kind of issue, then that would fall under your employment practices. So it kind of depends on, you know, what type of claim it is.
So what would be the deductible on that?
Oh, the deductible on, for the. For the sheriff?
Unfair, no, and just any other like, like a department head.
Terminating someone, terminating someone, yeah.
That's deductible is five thousand dollars.
With an aggregate of ten million, correct?
Right, ten million aggregate. Do you guys have any other questions for us?
Chris, you got any more questions?
No, not that I can think of.
All right. Again, thank you for your time. Really appreciate it. I guess one more thing too that I forgot to mention, it's not like the hard dollars and cents, which is what we really, our agency, we specialize in public entity coverages, and that includes risk management services. So we're not just people that come in once a year, once every three years and bid out your insurance and get you the best price for whatever happened. We, you know, you guys have done that. That's what you have now. You, you go and you get, you're like, oh, well, this year it's a hundred thousand, next year it's two hundred fifty thousand, sorry. And then the next year you're canceled, and the next year you're canceled. So you're scrambling around. We have a more, we have a planned risk management approach with loss control support from both the carrier and from our company. And we'll help you guys prevent claims. I mean, we, we have looked at your past losses. We know where the problem areas are. You guys know that too. And we have training programs, policies and procedures that you can implement that'll help bring your losses down and hold your hand to help you guys work to get your pricing down. The answer is not just go out and see who'll give you the best quote for whatever you happen to have. The answer is find a broker that's going to work for you. Make sure that your property is properly covered. Make sure you get the best deductibles and coverage you can get. And make sure that you guys are, have the support from us to help your sheriff, sheriff's department not have claims against them. Help your street and road guys not have automobile accidents, all that kind of stuff. I mean, that's, that's something that, when you look at that spreadsheet, you don't see that comparison, but that's what we bring to the table in addition to the extra limits.
You're bas, you're basically talking about educational programs to mitigate liabilities.
That's right. Yeah. Education and, and some help on understanding best practices, things that have worked for other communities that we've worked with that have, that have helped them dramatically see decreases year over year. So, and that, that's critical because if you keep doing the same thing, you're gonna keep getting the same results.
You also said earlier, just to record, that you guys have been the broker for Crown Point for thirty years?
I said I'd been an agent for thirty years. I've only been the agent of Crown Point for about twenty-six. I used to be a school teacher. And I found out, get smart people like Kelly, this insurance isn't all, all that hard to handle. And she's been doing it, I've been doing it thirty-two years, and she's been doing it, what, ten, twelve?
Yeah, about fifteen.
About fifteen. She's younger, she looks.
But you guys are with other government agencies and counties and.
Yeah.
And then we might add that we're the fourteenth largest insurance agency in the United States. Big is not always better. That's why we focus on one line of coverage, which is cities, towns, county governments, and.
County hospitals.
Hospitals. So our, matter of fact, we have your hospital insured.
And so one thing that that size does bring to the table too is the ability to negotiate things like making sure you don't get a penalty, making sure you do get claims covered. We have an entire department of claims people that when you have a claim, they get on the phone with the company. They've been doing claims, the average tenure of those people is twenty years each in our claims department. Their sole job is to work on the claims for our clients to make sure that things get covered expeditiously and completely. So we have, the benefit of the size is you have a big back room working, working for you guys.
And our price did change from the day we gave it to you and you guys put it in the safe. And you do have some choices though, so you might want to look at page three. And she's done a really good job separating those, which is picking a deductible from us, law enforcement, those things.
Yeah, because like you're saying, our, what we originally quoted was a twenty-five thousand dollar deductible, but you have an option for a ten thousand in there. So if you wanted, that's only marginally more expensive for a significant reduction in, in the deductible.
So what happens if a claim's filed and dismissed? Do you lose the deductible and you get that back?
Oh, if a claim's filed and dismissed, yeah, you, you wouldn't have paid a deductible unless there's a defense cost. Yeah, yeah.
But this deductible covers defense costs?
Yeah. I mean, it's. Yeah.
Yeah, you'd be charged a deductible if there were any defense costs, even if the later got dismissed. I think that's how it is now.
Yeah, because it's already paid out. Yeah, you're right.
Already been included, so, yeah.
As you had said to me earlier, and quote me if I'm wrong, you had said to me a while back that just because the bottom-line number is cheaper does not always mean at the end of the day that when something happens means that it's the best, that was, it's the best way to go as far as, you might pay a little more.
Right.
But you're guaranteed coverage without a doubt.
Right. And you, and you have the higher limits. I mean, it's kind of like, I mean, it's kind of like if you go to the store and you buy a little bottle of pop in a machine for a dollar twenty, but you can get a whole two-liter for a dollar ninety-nine, it's worth paying seventy cents more for the two-liter if you have to, you know.
Right. Because like I said, I'm not an insurance expert. I'm not. I just, you know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Greg, you want to make any comments to regard what was.
Specific from.
Everybody had their say.
Specific from our carrier's perspective, I would like for him to visit some of the things that were mentioned.
Okay, I'm Eric Ackerman. I represent EMC. Couple of questions I would have. When did Bliss, and I'm asking you, change their limits to where they're not sharing limits? Because I've done this for twenty-one years. I've talked to agents as much as yes, or last week. Is this new?
Well, they'll do it on, you know, they'll do it for case by case. When they started doing it, I couldn't tell you that, but I know we can, we've had it done. doing it, I couldn't tell you that, but I know we can, we've had it done before. It's not new. It's not a new paradigm that we've done.
It's new. It's new. I would, I would get it in writing from the company before.
We have included the quote in, in the package.
Cause any agent I've talked to shared limits. Uh, the other thing is, it was mentioned that there was not a deduct, or a, um, audit. Do you guys audit your policy, your general liability? Does Bliss?
Does Bliss? Uh, no, it's not audited. What you pay is what you, what you pay.
It's not audited, that's a change too. Okay, that, I just wanna clarify that. Earned premium, I can speak for EMC. Basically what you did a week ago is you bought, you bound coverage, or two weeks ago, you bound coverage. You made a decision at this meeting and said we're gonna go with Brad's company, which I represent. EMC was on it from July 1 through now, or if you change your mind. It, it's not like you can go back and say, okay, we had a week here, we had coverage and now we're gonna change it. You had coverage from us. And it's the same thing. I can't address the law enforcement as much. I'll let them address that. But there would be no penalty for leaving, but you would owe four weeks' worth of coverage at that point for the EMC. The, the law would have a penalty with it because it is different. It is a standalone company. Um, she mentioned med pay. What med pay is, what we have, it's a $5,000 non-negligitory. If somebody walks out of here and slips, trips and falls, we're gonna say, okay, we're gonna pay for broken arm. There's no, there's nothing that has to trigger coverage. We just say that we know that you have public premises and we know that things happen on public premises. So med pay is a $5,000 non-negligatory thing. We're just gonna pay that. They don't have that. So that, that could be something out of your pocket that you might have to pay as well. Uh, the deductibles, um, our deductibles on EMC are, are deductibles, we have general liability and we have auto. Um, all their deductibles is, I think, is it $10,000 on the insurance? Is that what your deductible is? I haven't seen your anything.
Oh.
So, well, I mean, on the liability. So you would have a $10,000 deductible every time that you were hit with a liability claim. With EMC, I think it was $2,500 deductible.
And I, that's a point of correction there to be sure we're all understanding. Um, the question was asked with regard to, uh, public official or EEOC, uh, loss complaint, et cetera. And I thought that I heard the, uh, your answer was a $5,000 deductible there. And what very limited information I've seen in your initial summary, that deductible was at 10,000 is, which is correct?
Um, which one? Our deductible on the general liability is 5,000.
What is the first form of practices, as of today?
Yeah, 5,000.
And last week it was 10,000 is what was stated here in the meetings. They said they had a $10,000.
I don't think, well, I think if that was stated, that was a mistake. It's, it is five and it's always been 5,000.
The other thing is with our general liability, we have zero deductible. So there would be no deductible with general liability. So every
Are you, excuse me, interrupting, but you're talking about, uh, a civil claim. You're talking about like, what are you talking about? In what area are you talking about deductibles?
Well, trips and falls is, is easier. Trips and falls is the easiest way to explain that.
Broken fingers.
Well, I mean, just any, any general liability claim, there would be no deductible.
Yeah, it's different.
And, uh, on the property, we did put the property, the building at a functional replacement cost, uh, for the courthouse. But the other buildings, we did ensure they're guaranteed replacement cost. There is no penalty. You would have up to that limit on the rest of the buildings. You know, we talked about co-insurance penalty. EMC does not have a co-insurance penalty. It's guaranteed replacement cost up to the limit of the policy.
Just so, and, and I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand and I'm also trying to explain so the people that are watching understand. If you're talking about a functional building valuation, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth.
Okay.
In the event, God forbid, this new section burned down or became completely unusable for whatever reason.
Right.
Okay, your limits on this particular part of the policy would cover to build a building which is functional for the needs of the courthouse.
Right, right.
As, as the needs are now.
Right.
But it, it may
We would have, she was correct when, uh, she stated, I'm sorry, this blew up.
That's okay too, though. No problem.
I don't really need to, that sounds bad.
No worries.
When, when it was stated that we would not have the architect, architectural, architect, I can't say it, architect, uh, stuff back. We would not put it back historically. We would do it functional to where you would have the building back, to where you could use it. There would be the courtroom. Everything inside would basically be the same. It's just
What is mentioned about, I mean, the difference between quality and functional too?
And I'm gonna use this room as an example. If this room were destroyed, this room would be put back exactly as it is today.
But the outside may not be the same.
The outside of everything but the old structure would also be put back as it was. The difference could lie in what is the hardwood that is in some of the old structure? Can it even be purchased today? If it could, where do we find it and how much does it cost? And we would bring today's similar, closest wood to the, to the table that we could find.
So what you're, what you're basically talking about is, is you have not covered something which would be architecturally and, and historically as close as what we have now to replace it in addition to the artwork in, in the certain courtroom. Am I, am I, I'm sorry?
That couldn't be replaced.
No, that couldn't be replaced. So that's, that's what you're, you're, you can't cover that because, I mean, it's a hundred and, what, 161 some, or 60 years old. You cannot replace that. So that's what you're saying. Am I right?
In essence, yes, that, that is what I'm saying. However, inside this form, inside some of the additional coverages that are provided, there is some coverage for some fine arts coverage that is in addition to your other lines of coverage. And there again, and some of this comes down to what can it, could it ever be replaced as it was? And the answer to that is no.
So if I hang one of my paintings on the wall and it gets stolen, it'll be covered under fine arts? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, we have that too.
And again
It's a sublimity. It's a sublimity of the coverage. It's not, it's not an additional.
That's correct.
It's a sublimity of the coverage you have.
Very correct. One other point I'd like to make too is in 2007, you were with Bliss McKnight, the, the company being proposed. Brad took it to market and we wrote your business at that time. And we saved you 70, I think it was $70,000. Since then, there was a, a nice savings Brad added up to 500,000 from that year to current year. We've had your insurance before. We've lost it before, or since then, because he went back to the market and found it cheaper. Okay, that's why we lost it. And that's when the claims started happening with the sheriff's department. And, and that's where he got into the problem with the law. And that, and that will happen when you bid your insurance a lot. If you, the advantage of staying with someone for a long time, a lot of times they may just stay on that account or that claim. And you may have the insurance, but you may pay more in the long run. But at, at that point, Brad has saved you a significant amount of money for moving from Bliss to our company. We're, we've been with you before. You've had Bliss before. Uh, we, I think we handled everything in a fine manner. And once again, we're IPEP as well. So it's something, I thank you for your business. Love to keep your business. And just thanks for your time.
And, two things I'll address is the, um, financial stability of a law carrier there or an A rated carrier. Um, and they are not admitted. What does that mean? They don't pay a tax to the state. Um, it is built into your coverage and yes is the answer to that. Does that make them a bad carrier? And no, it does not because there are many, many carriers that us insurance folks could throw around that are also in the same situation, but their financial strength, AM Best has been mentioned, is at a good to excellent level with this carrier. Um, risk management. Um, we also have the same tools. We also make this offer once again. Um, actually this past year brought folks in wanting to help and improve and provided sample current up-to-date's policy with all the law enforcement folks. And they are not complete with this, but they are working on it. So, um, that, that is a, a strength that we have brought to the table as well. Um, I mentioned three to five years because, um, as has been said here, if you go shopping every year, every year, every year, you end up burning bridges on the other hand, where people may not be willing to come back once again to the table. So I'm very aware of this. This has always been on my radar screen. I have been very transparent with all of the people that I have worked with in the past, meaning both from your perspective as well as our carriers.
There was a couple of things I just wanted to clear up here. We, we did not make any changes to our, our numbers or our quote either. And we made that clear right at the beginning. Uh, we, we brought the, the best in the, that we had right out the gates. So, uh, with the law piece, uh, when it went to Apex, it, we, we placed it there because we, we had to, um, because of the issues and the claims. Uh, we, we approached Bliss in 2013 and asked for a quote to try to, try to get better limits and try to get better premiums on this. And they were not interested at the time.
Actually, I know, I know why. And it, I wish we had the Bliss guy here. He was, is on vacation, so he wasn't here, but he came to your last meeting, or two meetings ago. And, uh, they, he, uh, Mr. Wilson did approach him for a quote. And they said they would be willing to quote if he filled out the applications, which never happened.
I am sorry. I disagree.
I just wanna clear this up real quick.
Sorry, I totally disagree.
Yeah, I, I just wanna clear this up though. We have made no threats. We have done nothing but try to do the best interest for Fayette County. And that man there has done this for 25 plus years and been the best interest of Fayette County. We're very hard for you guys and we want to continue working very hard for you guys to do the best we can for the county.
You are with Bliss McKnight, correct?
No, no, I'm with EMC.
EMC.
I'm with EMC. I'm with, I'm with EMC. I went down the insurance side of Oklahoma. We handle EMC and IPEP. That's all my friends. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm waiting on it.
Well, that's a whole lot of information.
Yeah. That's a, a lot to consider.
Maybe our attorney and our auditor can have a better handle on this. This is
I'm gonna move to recess and let us get our heads together on this. Cause there's a lot to consider. I'll second that.
Okay, move to second. Okay, we'll say hi.
Aye.
We're gonna take a recess and let's mull this over and let the attorney and our auditor look at things. And that's, uh, that's a whole lot more than this old man can digest in, in an hour's time.
Pardon? They might keep themselves available just in case we wanna ask some clarification or any of your, or Chris.
Okay.
Would you keep yourselves available just in case we have a, a clarification that either the auditor or the attorney or one of us has at this room?
Absolutely.
Doesn't mean you can't go get the same.
Absolutely. You have a idea of timeframe.
I, I really don't. I really don't. I hope, I'd hope not long, but I don't know. Actually, that's more information than this old man can digest very quick. So
I have a comment to make. I, I think it's very important that you guys remember that every dollar spent in Fayette County stays in Fayette County. So in making that decision, I don't think it's all the numbers in your policies. I've not seen them. But it's very important that you keep in mind that dollars spent in Fayette County stays in Fayette County.
Right. Okay. So let's, let's take a recess.
Okay. Well, we'll call a need back order. Once the wishes of the commissioners. We have, actually, we took the better part of an hour and a half. And with our attorney, with the auditor, uh, we did bring Mr. Wilson back in at one point for clarification on his, on the law enforcement stuff. Other than that, it was just us. We tried to compare, uh, get into specifics. And, uh, and correct me if I'm wrong, you both said basically your presentations today are, are the same as they were two weeks ago?
The only difference is we gave you a comparison after your last meeting.
Um, your company does provide some very, uh, good amounts and coverage. However, we're looking at, in my opinion, I'm giving you my opinion, uh, I'm still in favor of what I voted for two weeks ago because, uh, the question that I asked consistently in our, in our consultation here was, are we, do we have sufficient coverage? And we're looking at price. Okay. Um, at, either policy we choose or over what the county council has budgeted us. So, uh, Mr. President, at this time, I'm prepared to make a motion. Okay.
One thing real quick. I don't know if we meant, if we mentioned this, but I know that, that they were discussing the, you know, the benefits of sovereign immunity and tort limits in Indiana. The tort limit is 5 million. So you will not have coverage up to 5 million on your law enforcement legal if you go with that coverage. You will be at only 1 million, which is 4 million below what the state law does, uh, show as the limit.
Chris?
You mean in the aggregate?
Yeah, I mean, if you have, if you have one incident, if you have one incident with multiple claimants, the, the tort limit in, in the state of Indiana is 5 million.
Per occurrence.
Per occurrence. Yep. And on, on that policy, you have 1 million per occurrence, 1 million aggregate. We have 5 million per occurrence, which meets the state mis- tort liability and 10 million in the aggregate. And for the difference in price, if you look at ours, it's like 219,000 versus his 208,000. If you look at that price, it's, uh, what, uh, 10 or 11,000. If you have, um, one claim, one general liability, or, uh, law enforcement liability claim, you have 25,000 dollars more exposure that you have paying just one claim. If you have multiple, there's more.
You're talking about the deductible?
The deductible, yeah. I mean, it's just dollars and cents wise, it's a minimal, that, that eight or, eight or 10,000 dollars more, then you're getting, you're getting proper coverage. The state of Indiana, it's a 750,000 dollars per person, 5 million in the aggregate is, is the tort claim limit for governmental entities.
You said, you say 219, it's, it's, your, your quote is 219, 758. However, uh, I don't think we could do without the additional rider. I'm sure that's not the proper terminology for prior acts, uh, which is 7,141 dollars.
Yeah, 7,000 dollars, that's, that's a one-time payment. You would never repay it again.
Right. So 226,000 is a change. Yeah, about two, at 226,900, almost, almost 27,000. Okay. And that, the other part of that was bringing the civil rights deductible, which crosses
several lines.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So do you have a motion, Frank?
Uh, I'm sorry, I was thinking.
No, go ahead and think.
That's why the noise. Uh, yes, I still, uh, I understand your, your, your position, but I still move that we, uh, retain, I don't exactly how to word the motion, but that we keep Wilson Lawson Myers per hour, uh, decision two weeks ago, am I correct? Last week. Last week, okay.
Oh, I thought it was 625.
It was, it was. Yeah, it was 25. Yeah, it was 6:25.
It was week four last, yeah.
Yeah, it was week four last, we had this meeting.
Have you done your motion?
Yes.
In light of what things are, I'm not going to stand in the way of progress, the county has to have insurance, it has to. Whether right or wrong or indifferent, it has to have insurance. So I'm going to second his motion, because I'm not going to stop the process of the county having insurance, because the county having insurance, not having insurance, is 10 times worse than what you're going to get. So you have a second, motion on the second.
Please, second, we retain the insurance we now have, any more discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close.
Aye.
Motion here. Now, now it's coming for, let me entertain the motion, please.
Second.
Please, second, adjourn the meeting, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion here. Be good, Jerry. Now, I guess we move on.